If I start the meeting for this one, I'll kick it off. This is interesting. This is a first time for for me to be kicking off a board meeting. So I'll call the meeting to order on December 1st, Tuesday at 6:01 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Baker?
Here.
Bertle?
Here.
Bell?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
Kadunko?
Here.
And Nino?
Here.
Okay, would everyone join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the Republic for which it stands. Indivisible. For all.
Okay, I'm not a voting member. I need someone to do the approval of the agenda in minutes as published.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agendas. Is that it?
I can.
Okay, were there any changes or anything?
Well, I think that first motion was for the agenda.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Vote on that, then we can make one for the minutes.
Yep. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve minutes from our last meeting.
We actually got three different sets. October 27th and November 10th.
I'll make a motion to approve the the minutes from October 27th.
I believe it's the 20th.
Yeah, I think it's the 20th.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hey.
I have a question. In those minutes, it talked about putting an add in the pulse for all of the committee openings. Has that been done?
That has not been done yet, but we'll get that done this week.
This week? Okay. Thank you.
Figured with the the news here, it might be good to put everything in a lump sum for for all the positions now.
I'll make a motion to approve October 27th's minutes. I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pass. Is that all for minutes or was there one more set?
Motion to approve the minutes from the November 10th meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you approved? Mel, can you help me run through the?
Is anybody else having feed issues with everybody?
It's a little bit delayed on my end to see though.
I'm gonna log out and get me back in, Bo, because everybody's jumbled. I can't hear anybody. I'm gonna hopefully I'm better, but my internet's fast, so I'm not sure why, but I'm gonna leave and try to come back in.
Okay. Alright, um.
Wanna wait for Chad or should I explain what the correspondence is?
Um, why don't you start?
Okay. Well, there's a number of pieces of correspondence in the packets. There's a thank you letter which was received from Jill Lost for the donation the village made in memory of her husband Lee Lost, who was one of the village's poll workers. There was also an email that was received from Julia Weiderman. And in her email, she indicates that in later the increase in COVID-19 diagnoses, she was horrified to drive by Stabour on the afternoon of Sunday, October 11th, and see that the beer garden was packed with people. There's also a letter from Representative Joel Kitchens. In that letter, he indicates that he would like to thank Heidi Tike, the village clerk, for all the hard work and effort she put into the November elections. In addition to that, there's a detailed incident response report for the village for May, June, July, and August, as well as a countywide law enforcement summary for that same time period. And that document was received from the Door County Sheriff's Department. Um, then there's a letter from Karen Studabaker, a member of the League of Women Voters. In in her letter, she also thanks Heidi for all her efforts at previously mentioned election. There's also an email that was received from Christina Studabaker, the Community Impact Coordinator for the United Way of Door County. There was a survey that was being conducted. Unfortunately, the deadline has passed for that. But in her email, Ms. Studabaker asks that everyone respond to that that survey and and give truthful answers. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Is your connection better, Chad?
Yeah, I was on some. I was on the village Wi-Fi from way down at my house automatically and now my mine.
Much better.
I was dumbfounded how that could be.
I think it's worth reiterating, you know, Joel Kitchens and Karen Studabaker sentiment that how how well Heidi did and how well all of the clerks in the state of Wisconsin did, that they are vital to the democracy and they are the backbone of it. And it's a big thank you to Heidi and all the other clerks out there.
Thanks, Nate.
Agreed.
Alright, well, we will jump into item number one on the new village board business items. Acceptance of the resignation of the village board president, David Lino, and discussion regarding appointment of a pro temp board president. Consider from a consider a motion for action if appropriate.
So. A motion that we accept Dave Lino's letter of resignation and also thank him at this time, although we will do something more formal in the future for his years of service.
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, so just some quick discussion. I put a little bit of a description into the agenda. I just have to pull it up, but essentially moving forward now, there's two options here.
Bo, can we vote on the motion first?
Yep, sorry. New to running the meetings.
I would also like to mention, Dave, thank you for all your hard work and dedication and time served and wait a leak out on us and go to the marina.
One thing, it's 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 more than a little strange to sit here as an observer. As I see everybody's smiling faces, I guess this is the last night of the current magnificent magnificent seven. Magnificent six for a little while ago, but.
I'd like to thank you too, Dave. Lot of ground covered in the last 10 years that I've been with, almost 10 years that I've been on the board and got a lot done. Thank you.
We sure did. Thank you. Thank all of you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
I'm sure I'm not the only one who thinks this, but I've learned a lot from watching you over the years, Dave.
Thanks, Nate.
Alright, so with. All those in favor respond with an aye.
Aye.
Karen.
Okay, so following up that vote, there needs to be a discussion amongst the board on next steps for a pro temp board president. There are two options here. I put the descriptions in. Option number one would be filling the vacancy. The board can discuss and choose to decide a pro temp board president. They would be sitting in the seat until the April elections in that in the case that a new board takes over. The second option would be proceeding without a village president. This scenario would play out that there's no decision made at this meeting, in which case that there will be no one sitting in the chair and all discussion items would be brought to the board. But from a staff's perspective, it makes it a little difficult in getting an authorized, you know, signature from a trustee. We would have to get all of the trustees organized to get some signatures done. It makes it a little hectic, so the staff recommendation would be to have the board discuss and appoint a pro temp board president.
I agree that we should appoint somebody. I.
And by the way, I don't know if it's just me, but your volume was kind of muscled there. You may have to start over. No, for some, is your mic covered or anything? Maybe.
Mute yourself and unmute yourself. Well, I'm saying turn it off and back on again.
Nope, got worse.
Well, I guess.
That's better.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I didn't do anything. Um, I I would like to encourage whoever's gonna go for it, go for it, and that would be great, but I think the fact that we have a former board president with us right now, and if she's willing to do it for the next couple of months, I would like to nominate Denise to do it. Since she's already takes over and Dave isn't here. I don't know if she wants to do it, so sorry Denise, if you don't. I'm fine with any of you doing it, quite honestly, like, you know. We got three or four months, like, I'm good with anybody deciding they want to do it, but I think since we have somebody with experience, we might as well just make her do it.
Second that. You're welcome, Denise.
Thanks. I I would be willing to do it, though.
Okay, then I will second that. I appreciate that Denise, that you're willing to step up.
But just so that everybody understands, I my name will not be on the ballot in April, at least for the president.
Okay, so just so everyone understands, moving forward, after a vote takes place, the papers will still need to be pulled to replace that board president's position. Any individual who is interested in doing that, and we will post this, they have until December 15th to get the papers in and to run for the position. So if you know of anybody or if anybody asks, it's December 15th is the deadline.
Who's all who's all up in April? I am. I am. Scott?
Yep.
Pat? No?
I think next year I was this past year.
Just me and Scott are up?
And and Nate.
You guys can flip a coin over just changing the name on your page from trusted president.
I mean, we could. We could do a Rochambeau and loser wins, so to speak, but I no, no, thanks. I don't have the time.
And clearly Scott's the guy.
Alright, there it was. You spoke last, Scott.
Sounds like. Okay.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion, if anyone has any comments to make, I will have Janelle do a roll call for the vote for this.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got Bell.
This is this would be for Denise Beardo taking the pro temp board president position until April.
Okay, so Bell, so.
Yes.
Okay, Baker?
Yes.
Denise, how do you last? Duffy?
Yes.
Kadunko?
Yes.
Nino?
Yes.
And Bertle?
I'd like to abstain. I don't feel comfortable voting for myself. Thank you.
Okay.
But thank you for the for the honor and the confidence.
So Denise, follow up question. Do you want to do you want to run the rest of the meeting?
Sure.
You guys can all thank me later that neither none of you have to run the rest of the meeting right now.
Okay, item number two, discussion regarding and an update on the village's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Dave, you are our go to guy.
Oh. I guess I just report back on what happened at the county. The county, of course, issued the additional health advisory. The county board passed a resolution to back up and support that. They continue to do a number of outline testing sites and will continue that for the foreseeable future. The numbers that I've seen recently appear to be leveling off. Hopefully, they will continue that, but everybody's expecting a little bit of a bump up after a couple of weeks now after the Thanksgiving holiday. I do know that public health is continuing to see what's going to happen with the vaccine and how that's going to come down through the federal government via the state and down to the local health departments as far as who, what, how, where, and when. And that's the latest update that I have as far as at the county level.
So Dave, because as county board chair and you were it went to or zoomed into a lot of the task force meetings, public health meetings, some of Dan Kane's meetings. And since we will not have you as our president, how do we fill that void? What is your suggestion? Is it is it pertinent that we continue to have contact with these other groups?
Um, I would say it's pertinent to try and continue to have the contact with those other groups. I am more than happy to fill that role if you'd like me to. Just as I do the monthly county board representative report, I'd be happy to do that on an ongoing basis, too, and they can be combined into, you know, the same item if you'd like. And, you know, it'd be at your pleasure if you wanted me to continue, and I'm happy to continue.
Chad?
Yeah, you're missing a huge point here, Denise. You know, it works for us. You can make them come to all these village board meetings to bring this on. I will say it's been it's been an asset to have Dave update us on the county. Because of him, we just know more what's going on in the county, and I know I appreciate it. So even if he doesn't want to be at a meeting, maybe he could just do a little type up for us, but Pat can make him do that for the through the Marina Committee anyway.
You got it.
Power that they're starting wield already over you, Dave.
But I didn't hear. I haven't heard anything the last couple of minutes.
If you're really.
It's insightful to have that information. I I know we I think we all appreciate our connection we have with the county because of you and.
Agree with your thoughts, Chad. I agree.
So if you're volunteering and if there's just general consensus across the board, then I think we would like to extend that offer. And we can roll them into one agenda item for each meeting and have it at the beginning of the meeting. So if you choose not to hang around for the rest of it, you're free to go. Yeah, Chad?
Just to make it even easier on them. If you can't make it, you know, it's these these done a lot of meetings still is, so even a phone call to you or to the next village president to, hey, I talked to Dave from the county. This is what's going on, like, you know, I think that would be great, you know, I don't want to. You know, he's meeting out, I'm sure, so I don't want to make.
I I will try and be present whenever possible. There may be the occasional time when I would have to do something like that, but I would make every effort to try and do it in person whenever possible.
That's great.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, discussion regarding the recommendation from staff that the village board approve a contract with Charter Communications for the provision of upgraded telephone and internet services at the wastewater treatment plant and upgraded telephone services at several other facilities that are owned by the village. Consider a motion. If appropriate, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I I think that we need to send this to committee or we need to disband that committee because this is the many times this has come up. And actually, on half of this issue, it came up directly in October. So there is a committee that should go through. This would be like having something happening at parks and having go straight to the village board. So either we should utilize that committee or we should disband it.
So just from staff's side of things.
Okay, before, excuse me, Bo, would there be a second to my motion?
I'll second it.
By Baker. Okay, Bo.
Okay, so this one is rather interesting just from the get go because I did work with our previous board president on part of this discussion that we're having. So to give you a quick background on this, I was approached by Josh Steffick, who is our Robert E. Lee project manager for the upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. And through October into November, we had a discussion about requirements for internets and phone out at the wastewater treatment plants to be able to handle the upgrade to our SCADA system. And just for those of you that don't know, the SCADA system is the supervisory control and data acquisition. It's basically the receiving end from the towers and any update to the system that can be generated through the internet. So there's a requirement of certain download and upload speed. So this I, you know, staff took that information and some research on any qualified services that would be able to handle that upgrade and to bring it to the wastewater treatment plant. We did look at Door County broadband. At first, I did attach the information to the packet. Just as it shows in there, they just don't meet the needs for internet requirements at this point in time. So I did look at Charter Communications and I did have a discussion with Rick, who I believe is on this call. He may, I think he's still on this call. Yeah. Oh, there he is on the top. So we had a discussion about meeting these requirements and how we would be able to do that. And we had a discussion about running fiber to the wastewater treatment plants. And right away, we had the answer that it's going to be extremely expensive to dig into the bedrock and to do that. So the the question came up as far as what can we do in other areas of the village to bring the cost of the COAX construction down? And I'll have Rick kind of take over on why we're looking at a broader picture besides just the wastewater treatment plant and how it impacts.
I want to stop you here, Bo. I I get the internet part, and that's not. That's not the part I don't. I'm really not a fan of this. There was a direct answer on the voice side several months ago. There was a direct answer on this, and you're coming back and pushing the same thing. And I haven't heard from you at all. So that's what I and I I really don't care for how this is being framed in here. But I it does not make any sense to sign a voice contract with your ISP these days. The rates on there aren't that great, and we haven't had a conversation about it. That's what I'm pushing back on. Everything you're saying, I I'm not contesting any of the the internet side. What I don't like is that we had a conversation about this and you're pushing the same thing back for half of it. I get that what Charter is trying to do is make their monthly reoccurring greater so that they can kind of eat a lot of the construction costs, but there's a lot of expense in here. There's a lot of reoccurring cost at the at the expense of getting rid of a non-reoccurring cost. I mean, you're renting phones for for five bucks a month for perpetuity is not a great deal. And there has not been a look at alternatives on the phone side. That's what I am really unhappy with on this. I I get it. Charter's got a great DOCSIS 3.1 system up here. It's amazing. That's how I'm talking to you right now. So I I don't dispute that. But what I don't like is if we have a committee, let's use it or let's not do it. But.
So I did have a conversation with our board president at the time, who is also on that committee. And the discussion was that we should bring this to board because it is only a two person committee. And the just and both committee members do sit on that on that service. The reason it's coming back up is because this has become a necessity for the wastewater treatment plant. And it was able to bring the cost down, but it also provides a lot. I'm not going to dispute that it does bring the month monthly bills up. It was up about $100. But the service that they're able to provide is significant enhancement to village operations. It will allow us to get a phone out at the Parks Building, which is much needed, a hard land.
What I'm saying, Bo, you're you're looking at one option here. I'm not saying that having a unified voice over IP cloud based phone system isn't a great thing. I use one all the time. I'm saying we shouldn't have that married to our ISP, the same thing I said last time.
Well, so is it possible to break the two out? Do some and go ahead with the internet, do some further investigation on the phone side. Maybe we wind up with Charter. Maybe we don't after further.
When we had investigated this, we did a lot of work on it several years ago, and then we also did some investigation now. The one issue that comes in is that, and I don't know the terminology, but it's the cheaper phone systems that you guys had talked about. There's government regulations that require that you have to satisfy all the FCC's requirements. Some of those phone systems or any of them that we checked.
Janelle, I know there's cloud systems that are handling 911. I know some of the providers I'm talking about, I understand that what I think, Pat, what did you say? What was the one you're looking at? Magic Jack or?
Well, I've used Magic Jack. I've used Vonage. I currently use Ooma, so I've used a variety of them. I don't have that overarching government. If there's a regulation, I don't know of it.
There is some. There are some funny things that go along with it, but there's also a number of providers. I mean, if they're hitting the requirements for 911 are much deeper than they are for maybe for local government. And I agree with what you're saying, Pat, of separate the two. Let's not have Charter bury this cost over the next three years. Let's know what it is. And if we choose to then have that buried across the next three years, let's make that choice. But I it is. So what happens is when you lock in and and Rick, I'm sure you're a wonderfully nice guy, and this is not against you, but this is how Charter has operated over the years. And that's what they're doing to me, and I'm not going anywhere because they've got me locked in. They get you on their service and they're going to slowly raise the rates. And if once they have the numbers on here and the phone system in there, the amount of money it takes to get out of it, especially when they own all of the infrastructure at your location, you're locked into them for forever because then now you're looking three years from now like, oh, well, who else is on here for a service provider? Well, they can save me 100 bucks a month, but it's going to cost me $15,000 to move over. You know, the to to decouple the internet and the voice is what I'm advocating. So if we can, if we can move ahead with the internet, fine.
Well, I don't. I don't want to dispute that because you're not saying anything wrong. The problem is, is when you're asking for the research on some of these other providers, there's a reason.
Asking for the conversation, Bo.
Okay, they they aren't able to work with government entities, and these are the options that we've looked at are what's viable up here and what's viable for the government entity. So that's why we're looking at this, and I also wanted to propose it because it does add a significant boost to our, you know, our staff and to be able to connect with one another because we aren't in the same building. There's just there's a number of possibilities that we can do with Charter, and I figured if we're going to have them do the construction for the wastewater treatment plant, we should have them look at the phone systems now because it also brings down the cost of the construction. That's why it's being presented right now.
So Nate, just so I can understand when you say that our phone system should not be married to our ISP. It is because of being locked in. And if we ever wanted to change something, it would cost us a ridiculous amount of money to get out of that contract. Plus, once they have you, the fees go up, just like, you know, my my charter bill went up, you know, $10 last year and $10 this year for absolutely no more service. And you have no idea why.
Your bill also went up about $4 a couple of months ago when the state of Wisconsin pulled sales tax off and Charter raised the rates just a little bit less than sales tax was. So it's it's the trajectory. Yeah, so what I'm saying is there are some large companies out there called Nextiva, 8x8. They're based in the cloud. You can use your your cell phone's internet to get connected to them. You can use Frontier. You could use Door County Broadband. Potentially, you could use Starlink. You could use whatever internet provider you want. But what Charter's selling is you have to connect to Charter. And if you want to go elsewhere, it won't work.
So my my two cents. I see Nate knows a hell of a lot more about this than I do. And it is like if there is a committee for this, which I'm hearing that I guess I've never, I mean, maybe I've heard that there is one, but I don't know if you guys have ever had a meeting. If if we're not going to go through committee for that, just like we do with Parks and Marina and, you know, planning, like, we're a community based kind of organization. We kind of make the the or the committee base. We make the committee do a lot of the lion's share of the work. And then, you know, we don't necessarily rubber stamp things, but we know that there's been a lot of thought given into it when it's presented to us. I'm not saying you, Bo, and Janelle and Dave haven't put time into this. I'm not making light of that, but I I do think Nate's a pretty valuable resource in this. Way more valuable than any of us because he knows the industry. And just to have more information doesn't doesn't hurt.
Yes, from from my standpoint, I'm by no means an expert on this. But I don't know who else to contact, you know, I we've contacted everyone that we could contact and and we felt that, you know, Charter provided the best service.
I think that's the point, Janelle, is you you contacted everybody you knew to contact.
Well.
Disputing that, but.
I guess no offense, but if you're hard to get a hold of, Nate.
When's the last time you tried to call me, Janelle?
No, it doesn't pay to argue.
No, but it it does pay to point out the facts there that nobody from the the village has called me in probably about nine months.
Actually, I tried to call you two days ago and yesterday.
We can have that conversation later.
Right. I just Googled VoIP cloud based phone services. Right. I just Googled VoIP cloud-based phone services for government offices. And C-Bod Telecom comes up specifically for government offices and businesses. C-E-B-O-D Telecom. And it says number of employees, it starts out with one to five, so it handles small municipal businesses theoretically. So that would be somebody that could be reached out to, to, I mean, I don't know them, but if you're looking for another possibility, that's the first one that pops up under VoIP Phone Service Systems for Government. Another one.
Everybody, um, sorry.
San Goma, S-A-N-G-O-M-A. Another one is Source Forge. So I, I think in 30 seconds, you can get a list of several potential companies to reach out to.
And Nate, Extiva, 8x8, Frontier, Starlink, do you know of any of those that do do government?
Nextiva is the one I was referencing that does need 911. Those other ones were internet providers.
Oh, okay.
Nextiva, N-E-X-T-I-V-A. And then the other one is eight, the numeral eight, X8, 8x8. Would be the two big players out there.
Okay, and you're familiar with them. Have you heard any of the ones that Pat just rattled off?
I haven't, but I'm sure there's some niche ones that deal with municipal governments.
Okay, so what, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? To get the wires out there, do, can we break out this contract? Can we start on something dealing with the internet if we take a month then to contact these other phone companies?
Yeah, you need the same wires, right? You're just running off of the internet.
That's the point, Pat, is you can run off whatever wires you want.
Right. So it shouldn't matter. You go ahead with running the wires for the internet. And again, maybe it's Charter. I'm not saying anything bad about them. But I would agree with Nate that this is a big deal. It's a long-term thing that a little time to evaluate potential resources or options. And then whatever the best one is, let this board or the committee decide, make a recommendation to the board.
So Bo, do you really need an answer tonight, or can this be put off to January's meeting? What's going on at the plant?
We would be able to push this to January, but it would have to be done. And we'd have to have construction ready for by January. Otherwise, it will just delay things. It'll delay the other constructions to hook up.
Okay.
In the next month, you could at minimum come back with the internet pulled out of there because that's the portion that is time-sensitive.
Yep.
And, and break this down because really this is, the other thing I don't like is this is rolling two things that aren't connected and making them connected.
Yeah, that, that's correct.
Is, is there a, before tonight's meeting is over, can Nate and Bo make, come up with a date where you guys could Zoom or something pertaining to this? Decide who you're going to talk to or have staff get, start doing that maybe next week and then meet after. And so we schedule that communication between the two of you tonight.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'm available. We can do that.
Rick?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Okay, it's my understanding that we kind of got a package deal and reduced pricing. It's, I'm thinking, is the internet cost going to increase then if we pull out the telephone? For budgeting purposes?
Yeah, but not to a great extent. And if I could just have a couple of minutes, being invited to this meeting. And I, I do greatly appreciate to have a seat and a couple of things that I've heard and Nate, I'm not sure if you've worked at Charter or another ISP before, but you probably could do what I do with your knowledge on it as well.
I look at you and I think 2115, your AS number.
2115.
Yeah, that's your autonomous system number, Charter.
Yeah, there you go.
I work with your private people.
Okay, great. Yeah, that, yeah, and everything that you'd said, there's probably dozens of different options you would have for hosted or, or cloud-based phone service connectivity equipment. I would say that each one of those would probably ask for some type of contract to provide their services. Those services also would run over whatever your ISP provider would be. An advanced spectrum like it is now at most of the village offices and further to the wastewater treatment plant. And I, I do respectfully understand Nate, where you're coming from as far as saying you don't want to marry your ISP with your, with your voice. But these technologies are merging and these technologies are becoming more intertwined with, with the advancements of technologies. And I would, I would say that our company, my company, Charter Spectrum, and the, the organization, part of the organization that I work for is the enterprise side of the organization. We, we, we consider ourselves still an ISP for sure because we do provide internet service. However, we are an enterprise, nationwide enterprise organization that integrates and becomes technology partners with government agencies. I specifically work with government and education facilities. And it's all I do. And we have a department or an organization within Spectrum, Charter Spectrum, that's much, much more than just an ISP. We, this is what we do every day is integrate unified communications, telecommunications services with our internet services to multiple village locations, to multiple village locations. And then cohesively make them all talk and sing together and operate and function and giving you one, one location if there was any type of questions or issues. When you separate that and, and you use a different cloud-based internet provider, hosted voice provider with a charter for your ISP or your internet connectivity, I mean, that's opening the door again for, well, it's their responsibility. Nope, it's their responsibility and having to go to multiple different vendors or a resolution and then blaming each other, you know. So there are advantages with going to an enterprise level company like Charter for this solution. And that's, you know, some of the other organizations or some of the other locations that is incorporated into the proposal that Bo and I had worked on and Janelle. It's increasing internet speeds at each of these locations. It's reducing costs for, for dial tone that's existing at these other locations. I think you've seen a proposal that we put in front of you here, or everybody got a copy of it, that says we're increasing some monthly revenues, but I don't think all the monthly revenues that you're paying right now are included in, in the comparison. The internet services and that are currently going out to the wastewater treatment plant are not incorporated in your existing costs. So what we're doing here with the proposal, I don't think is significantly increasing many of the monthly services. We can go over that again, piece by piece. Or, and we can definitely pull this back and then say, let's un-marry this like you're suggesting. I would just ask if you do that, then I, you know, I have a seat at that table as well. And the opportunity to present a solution that, that does do this and, and show you the differences that we're not just an ISP, but an actual solution, technology partner to our government and education accounts or customers.
Rick, something I, I would, I know that in the past, even with Charter, sometimes to get the non-reoccurring cost down, it comes in at the expense of monthly reoccurring cost. That's NRCs and MRCs. Rick uses that all the time, I'm sure. And I know that it has really changed the contract and said, hey, we're willing to accept some heavier stuff on the non-reoccurring side to get that long-term bill down. I know that usually that's not something offered unless it is explicitly asked for. But I think that's something that, you know, the village being in the position it is would want to, to take some of that upfront cost to make it a little bit more palatable over the long term, unlike some organizations.
Yeah, and, and with this and getting to the wastewater treatment plant with our coax cabling, I tried some different things, you know, and I've been with the organization for seven plus years. And usually I can, I, I know my ins and outs and who to contact within our plant group, within our, our engineering group. And just due to the nature of the build that is required to get to the wastewater treatment plant from where existing facilities end now, and then understanding that it's mostly bedrock that, you know, we'd be burying through or boring through, the cost to get out to the wastewater treatment plant with our cabling is, it's a pretty hefty price tag. The only reduction in that cost that's incorporated in the proposal was to bring services to two locations up and down Autumn. And that would be the sports complex and the wastewater treatment plant. I have a budget within projects for, for new build-out or new construction. And I have a budget per service location that I can reduce the costs. I can't reduce the costs by increasing other monthly revenue at other locations. And I can't reduce, reduce the capital costs of the build to the wastewater treatment plant by getting the phone service or equipment at the admin building. That's not how this proposal was put together.
If the village kicks, is, is, hits the capital costs upfront, can you do anything for monthly reoccurring? That's what I was coming, coming to because I know that has been, and fiber projects, that's been a really big issue. I've not dealt with it as much.
Fiber projects, you're exactly right, but we, we deemed that the fiber build to get out to the wastewater treatment plant was over $110,000. And that, that just wasn't, you know, that price tag was, we, we determined that, that it wasn't a viable price tag. Then, you know, getting, I'm sorry.
No, I just have a question so I understand. Okay, so you're saying that the fiber build was $110,000. And what we're getting, what this proposal is, is the coax. Okay.
That is correct.
And why is it that you have to put this in the ground? Why is it not going on poles if, if because we have bedrock?
I don't think there's poles out there, or at least suitable poles.
And, and there's not access on the poles determined by, or again, outside plant and engineering team.
Just because there's a pole doesn't mean they can attach to it. They've got to make sure that they hit minimum height requirements and all that because I don't know what it is, but it's like 12 or 14 feet. And so it's because the utility poles are there, doesn't mean it's accessible.
You could, you could drill a bunch of poles though for a hell of a lot less than $27,000.
Not that many. I mean, you're looking at about three grand a pop at least, even when you're doing them in town.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
The one, one thing I'd like to note or question is, is considering this is going past Scotland, they have the ability to tie in, which is great for Charter. Why can't we get them to pitch in some of this cost, approach it, see if they're interested? You know, you, you know, just like anytime running a sewer extension or any utility in a way, you know, anybody along the way usually is paying some for it.
You're getting a lot of crossings there.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench in this conversation, but.
That's too late to talk about now, basically. Should have been talked about.
Wow.
Um, we, we have a, an issue in closed session that I wonder if it will impact this at all. And I wonder if, if Scott would take back his second and I'll rescind my motion that maybe we have a conversation about that other thing enclosed to see if anybody feels that there's a correlation between the two and come back out and continue this conversation and decide where to go. I think generally we all feel that some, some additional research with those companies that were mentioned for phone should be addressed, certainly after that is compiled and Nate and Bo and who, whatever staff want to have that conversation, that then Rick can be brought into that conversation also. So then by the time we have our January meeting, we'll have some form of consensus of all parties involved and maybe have some more clear direction. Does that make any sense at all?
I, I think that the conversation we're having here shouldn't be in front of the board. I think that, that Rick knows what he's talking about, but I think the questions that I'm asking him and he's answering are probably going over everybody else's head. Don't want to, want to make too many presumptions, but this, this may not be effective use of everybody else's time. So why, why don't we set up, Bo and I should have a conversation and then Bo and I and Rick should have a conversation because quite honestly, I don't see how Spectrum's not going to be part of that. It's just what part of that that is.
Sure.
Sounds great.
And Denise, I will agree to rescind my second.
Okay, then I will rescind my first and basically should we just decide, just have a motion to table this until the January meeting?
Sure.
Yep.
I'm good.
Who would like to make that motion?
I will make the motion that we table this till January.
Nino?
I'll second.
Second by Kananko. All those in favor respond with an eye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Thanks for your time, Rick. We will be in touch and hopefully we'll have a, a resolution within a, you know, six weeks or so.
Yeah, and I look forward to being part of the continued conversation. I appreciate the invitation here and everybody have a Merry Christmas. Bo, we'll talk again soon, Janelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, guys.
Okay, can somebody tell me what page the next agenda items on?
Forty-three.
Thank you. Scrolling just takes forever. Okay, item number four. Discussion regarding your request from Jeremy Ashower of the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the village board to approve an increase in the village's share of costs associated with the state Highway 42 paving project in the amount of $2,736 for a total cost of $19,740. Motion by Berto.
I'll second.
Second by Nino. Discussion.
So just a quick update, Jeremy is no longer the project manager. He's taken another position. Since this went out, I did get an email. So our new point of contact with the DOT is Paul Brower. I do his contact information. So the, the quick run-through is that the, the project was bid and the estimate went a little over by $2,736. So we just need approval from the board to approve the project total for the village's portion of the state Highway 42 reconstruction of $19,740.
Tasha, you don't have any issues with that dollar amount, do you? She's not listening to us.
muted.
She's muted.
You gave her a chance to object.
Okay, all those in favor respond with, oh.
Sorry, are you waiting for me?
Yes.
Sorry, I stepped out to the copy machine. I see absolutely no issue with this. We have this money in reserve. I guess I felt safe stepping out, so no issues from me.
Okay, all those in favor respond with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Item number five, discussion regarding the recommendations. Trustee Kananko has made concerning appointments to the Friends of Pebble Beach Ad-Hoc Committee.
I, I don't think we need to discuss this. John had emailed me after the last time when I was thinking about, you know, willing to add him and then add another. He just decided not to enter the committee, so it's going to be the original five. He just decided not to enter the committee, so it's going to be the original five that I noted, and we're going to meet on Monday. And then hopefully we'll be able to. When is our next parks?
We were going to talk about that. It is slated for the seventh, but I don't think we we may not meet. I was just going to have that discussion after.
Okay. We're going to meet Monday at four thirty and go from there.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
You you're muted, you know.
Chad, what is John's last name?
McMurray.
Three. Okay, thank you.
Item number six, discussion regarding resolution number four, four, seven dash twelve, zero, one, twenty, twenty that amends the twenty twenty budget.
Denise, excuse me, you guys never made a motion to formally appoint those other people to the committee, so you should probably do that.
That last one, so the meeting before that we didn't?
No. You were gonna change the the makeup of the committee, so there was never a motion made to appoint anybody.
Okay, who's what were the names again, Chad?
The names are Lydia CMO, Kathy Anquist, Miles Danhausen, and Andrew Goldsworthy.
And yourself.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve those names mentioned.
Second.
Second by Bell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carried. Okay, now item number six. Tasha, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, sorry, my my mouse is sticking. This is a really quick motion. It ends up with a basically a net zero change. We had a massive change to the chart of accounts. It changed all numbers throughout the entire budget. And we had to revisit that whole budget. So this is the cleanup that brings that all back into place. And what I did to make it easy for you guys is put it in table format on page fifty-one of your packet. And you can see where there are changes that. Like for for the general fund, you can see it results in a net zero, but we're moving items between functions. You know, when we did the turn of accounts and I originally tried to budget, some of those items I was guestimating on on how to break down. For instance, Parks labor into eleven different categories. So in some cases I guessed wrong. So this is that cleanup that gets that all back into alignment. There are, you know, a few other really minor adjustments, but really it's in the general fund that we're looking at the changes.
Anybody have any specific questions for Tasha?
I don't. No, thanks for the extra work. Looks good.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Denise.
Motion by Baker.
All second.
Second by Kadanko. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carried. Item number seven, report on county activities from County Supervisor Dave Lino.
There is not much to add since the last county board meeting was the emergency meeting that did the resolution and the backup support for the. Emergency Health Advisory, so I have nothing to add to that. But I was wondering if you would go back to public comments since you didn't actually do that. On your agenda. And the reason for that is I want to bring up something that Parks I would like to consider or the board consider. We obviously have had a heck of a year as far as COVID and what we've had to do. And lockdowns and everything else, and people are having a hard time dealing with everything, and we continue to just go on and on and on with this. And I was hoping that we could lighten up something and maybe have a little fun. We're not having the cherry ball drop this year, but I looked at what we could do social distancing wise and everything else to do a little celebration, and I would propose that. The village allow the New Year's Eve fireworks to take place. It would be done. People are in their cars. They're not standing around. It could be done very well in the parking lots up and around there, just as it has been in the past. We would just have to watch what happened at the skating rink. But I would just think would be something to have a little cheer, a little move into the into the new year. It has been sitting in storage, obviously, since May and and September, because we couldn't do this, the Freedom Fest either. And so I just would ask if the village would be interested in doing that. I think it'd be a fun thing to do, and I think people would appreciate it.
Where where are you going to line them off, Dave?
We do it at the sports complex.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a no brainer.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
I thought Louise was going to be on tonight, but I don't see her. I think they do plan on doing something. With the cherry, whether it sits on somebody's property or they tool it around town, lit up or something. They're trying to. Trying to figure it out. So, okay. New Year's is not that far away. What what timeframe are we looking at to make a decision that you will need, Dave? Or is it two day? Well, we probably want to advertise it to a certain degree.
I would think it wouldn't take much in advertising. I think it'd go out in the pulse. I think it would go out in Facebook. I think. People look forward to it for the last several years that we've had it. You know, we don't forget, we did it before the cherry ball even started. The fireworks, and it was well attended. I think the word would go out fairly quickly. And I I wouldn't expect it to bring in a lot of people from outside. That wouldn't be the the issue. I think it's just something for the locals and just something for us to have a good time and smile about. Given everything that we've gone through over the last year. As far as timing, I would just need maybe a week's notice minimum. I've already looked into, you know, we do that on a flatbed trailer that we pull out there and fire everything off and then pull it back into the maintenance building. I already had called my car and it would be available for our use if we want to use it. So we already have the fireworks. Just a matter of getting the approval to go ahead and do it. And I I would think we certainly would work with Louise also, get her marketing arm out there.
Right, right. So Bo, did you, when you were talking about when Chad was asking when the next Parks meeting was going to be? Were you thinking that Parks was not going to meet in December or just not on that particular Monday?
Well, I just, I. I guess it can meet now if we have an, you know, an agenda item to discuss. I just thought that there might not be anything pressing or anything at this point. So I just, you know, obviously month of December, we usually tune things down. So I was just going to ask if you guys still wanted a meeting.
Although it's kind of ridiculous, I guess, for it to go to Parks. But I guess we can't talk about it because it's not.
An agenda item.
Talk about it under committee reports.
I don't. That might be too much, too. You know, I think we may just need to do a one agenda item Parks meeting and just, you know, I need to make sure.
I think we can go back to the our response of COVID and put it under there within this meeting.
It is a response to COVID. That is very accurate.
Our response to COVID. I'm going to get on the roof of Husby's and throw, you know, cherries at people.
Well, we have our attorney on. It might be worth asking, can we consider this under the COVID agenda item?
Come on.
I hate to be the wet blanket here, but we're. We're stepping over, tiptoeing over the line of open meeting violations.
Okay, that's. The the problem is, though, is that the board would not be meeting after Parks. So we would, the board, if Parks chooses to do this. The board almost has to give us permission, if that's the case, to move forward.
If I can be allowed, in the past, Parks just just approved it as a event, just like we would approve what happened with SBA.
And we're not spending funds.
Not with Parks. I'm sorry, Parks. Parks just approved it as an event. It didn't go to the board.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Good to know that our powers martial law that maybe gave us months ago, don't don't apply to fireworks.
Okay, we're having a Parks meeting. All right. Thank you, Dave.
Dave, do you need help prepping that at all anymore? I know that years ago when it was still the blow torches you did.
If you'd like to help, any help would be appreciated.
Yeah, text me when it gets closer.
Okay, will do.
Yeah, me too. I'll give you a hand.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, I will not be volunteering.
Every time you set one of them down in there, you just think it's going to blow your hand up, you know, it's great.
Three years, two years, still got all of them.
Okay.
Thanks a lot, everyone.
Thank you, Dave.
Good idea.
Agenda item number eight, report by the village administrator on village activities and projects. Bo?
Yeah, so I'll keep this brief. Martel, just a construction update. They're working on ADAC. The knee wall is completed. They did finish that. In the in the winter, which was the hopes that before it gets icy, they could complete it. They did. They did start a little bit of the repaving down all the way at the edge. Before it gets icy, if you're curious, or you want to see what the grading difference will be, it's pretty noticeable at the end. But they will be returning back in the spring. I'm coordinating with them to finish the paving, which was part of their schedule in the first place. So they are on schedule. Just some quick construction updates. I'm not sure if you're all aware, but the Al Johnson's Boutique Shop is officially open. They did have. A sale in there for Christmas decorations. It's it looks really nice inside. The Door Hotel is just completing the exterior construction and moving inside so that fence is out of the way. They will finish the exterior grading signage and all that in the spring, coming closer to the date. But their construction team will be moving indoors now. The old school property condominiums are almost completed in the first building. There's just a few more exterior components once again, and they'll be focusing indoors for the winter. With was. Pretend it's going to be a plan commission. It looks like they've sold all their first, the first building units, so they'll be pushing ahead and trying to get building two started. They've got to go with. They've got to present condo plans at plan commission, so that'll be coming up. The Gary Weesa duplex on the same property still has no change right now, but the board did allow for an extension, so I. Don't foresee any issues with them meeting their time commitment for this development, but I will keep a close eye on that as we head towards winter into the spring. Just if you aren't all aware, there was an attainable housing project that did receive preliminary approval from Plan Commission. Just wanted to give an update that the developer has begun the process for the weed application. If she has any questions or needs anything on our end, I'm assisting her on that. So I will keep you updated on how long that process is going to take and where we're at on that. The last thing, I did have a representative from the Country Walk. Come into the office and discuss restriping the parking lot. I know a lot of the spaces have kind of faded. The paint's gone. And there's been some pretty hectic or pretty hefty traffic concerns out there, so they're looking to do some restriping and add some additional. Striping or any changes to the parking lots to make it flow better. They'll be working with an engineer. I think that they will be bringing that along with any lighting changes. They're looking to do some additional lighting out there as well as it gets pretty dark in that parking lot by Piggly Wiggly. That would go to Plan Commission just for review. I think it's the right thing to do, you know, just to ensure that they're not losing any parking spaces, but also making sure that it's in a safe manner. So that should be coming down the pipeline pretty soon. My guess is probably January. Does anyone have any other questions for me?
There's just one quick question, Bo or Pat, maybe you can answer this. How'd that knee wall work out yesterday? Did anybody get a chance to see with the wind?
You know, it helps, but aesthetically it doesn't look like it because that water is crashing right into the wall. The problem is, until that grading on the dock is finished, the water is just going to sit. But the goal is after the grading is done, that water will go right back, you know, it'll recede off of the the dock and it won't sit. And that that's where we we've had some pooled up water before after a storm, so hopefully that gets resolved.
Okay.
It it definitely makes a difference, but the water is so high that there's still a fair amount of water that gets over the wall in bad storms.
But it's dropping, Pat. It's dropping.
Right, yes.
Okay. Heidi, would you like to chime in on your the statistics that you sent us?
I really didn't have anything extra to add. I wasn't sure if this was information that the trustees would be interested in. This year was kind of a big deal for an election, so I thought I would throw that out for you and let you know what the status of the voter participation is here in Sister Bay.
I appreciate it.
I did. Pretty impressive.
Yeah.
We had some great help from staff in the office to pull off this election. I had five regular pool workers assist as well in November. So we'll do our best to keep it smooth for the years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any questions on the facilities managers' report?
No.
Review, item number nine, review of the financial statements in consideration of a motion to approve the monthly bills. Does someone want to make a motion for one million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five cents?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by. Secretary Baker. Does anyone have any questions?
I have none.
Okay, all mine were answered before the meeting. All those in favor respond with an eye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Carried. Committee reports. Virtual joint meeting of the Finance and Personnel Committee. Unless somebody chimes in right away that has a question or a comment, I'll just go through these quickly.
Denise, those are the minutes, but on the agenda, if you go to that, there's all the committees listed, or do you want me to mention them and then?
Oh, yeah, because otherwise I have to go back and forth and I can't. Yeah.
There's administrative committee. They haven't met. Okay, admin and comp oversight hasn't met. Communication and technology hasn't met. Do you want to set a time for when they'll be meeting next or no?
Nate and I could talk after.
Okay. Okay, how about coastal byways?
Has not met.
DCEDC?
Beats next week.
Okay. Um, economic development has not met. Finance?
Met multiple times. I think, believe there's minutes in the packets if anybody had any questions, but seeing the budgets approved, I imagine not.
Okay, fire board?
Fire board met October tenth. That was our last meeting, basically the budget approval. And was it.
Okay, fire district exploratory?
Has not met.
Historical society.
Uh, met on the fifth of November. Just a couple little things. Farmer's Market made thirty-nine hundred dollars this year, just about. And which is just slightly less than last year, and basically the meeting discussed the dates for the twenty twenty-one events.
Okay, holiday lighting did not meet. Library commission?
Okay, the minutes are in there, but they had asked me to. Speak to you about their COVID nineteen policy. They had had an employee test positive, but she didn't actually test positive until a week after she had worked there. Christina's had a couple of patrons ask. About if, like if if anybody, any of the employees have tested positive, and she found out she legally cannot tell them. Because there was a question whether she should post something on the door saying that an employee had tested positive. She was told it'd be a violation of privacy. Issues if she did. So she cannot even. Confirm that someone did if someone asks her. So what they're going to do is if it ever, if it would ever happen again. They have decided that she would contact her supervisor, which is Tina. And report it to the county health department. And basically follow whatever instructions they're given at that point. So just to let you know that that's what the library commission had decided. Would be their policy.
I do understand. Well, I do and don't understand the privacy issues. I understand privacy issues about all healthcare in general. But it drives me crazy when, you know, we can't get a breakdown of what businesses in Sister Bay, not necessarily the people's names or. Or anything else like that, but just to know how many people in Sister Bay have contracted it, whatever. If if the library board feels. Or some other employee at the library. Unfortunately would get the virus. I believe it would be up to them to also decide. So if they wanted other people to know, they certainly could tell people. And if they didn't have a problem with the. And if they didn't have a problem with the library sharing that information, but I think it has to come from that person. I mean, when this first started, we did talk early on that if any of us board members got it, that we would share with the board, which is in an open meeting. And Dave Lino did do that, even though he didn't know he had it at the time. Months later, you know, he found out that he did and he did share that. So it's all on the comfort level of any individual. And, and you know, how they feel about it. Just for a different, another perspective.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I agree with you a lot on, I'd love to know, you know, how many are positive each day in Sister Bay versus all of Door County or even, even, you know, the northern villages and towns versus all of Door County. Well.
I'd be interested to hear Randy's take on it. Just, you know, many businesses like ours have willfully said, hey, we've had a case, we're shutting down. We're going to make sure other people don't have it, blah, blah, blah. Every, lots of people are doing that. It never even dawned on me, you know, we're not naming names or whatever. So obviously it's protected that way, but is it illegal for us to do that?
Well, let's see, the Department of Health Services of the state has suggested that it's, it's a breach of the, the medical confidentiality requirements to, to identify when even a staff member without naming that staff member has COVID. And right now, that's the, the guidance we have to go by. Ultimately, I think there's going to be some core challenges to all of those things because people are furious about that, to be quite honest. It isn't sitting well all over the place. And but, but everybody's sort of grinning and bearing it. There have been a few challenges by newspapers that have been tamped down for, for now, but eventually this is all going to get looked at. And I think the rules of the game are going to change, but right now we have to play the rules of the game as they are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll keep breaking for the public safety.
Tickler file, I had a note that you were going to report on what the, the library commission had decided to do about the provisions of the Door County operating agreement for the library.
Oh, it was in the minutes. Wasn't it? I read that in the minutes.
Yeah, there wasn't anything we had to, there wasn't anything in the agreement we had to change. Everything was still valid.
Back to them according to my notes and just let the board know if, if they sign the agreement and if it's been executed and that sort of thing.
I don't think we needed to do a new agreement, did we? We just had to review the old one and decide whether or not anything had to be changed.
Yeah.
And there wasn't an issue. The only other, other note I wanted to make is that, and this is more for Tasha, I guess, the air conditioning is, they couldn't replace it until December. It can't be tested in December, so they're going to replace it in June when it can be tested as it's installed. So that's just a, that be spending that money until June.
Thank you. Janelle, do you?
Sorry, I'm typing in.
I know.
Marina Committee.
So Marina Committee, we had a meeting. There's minutes in there. You heard about the recent news with Dave. We do have one question that we were going to pose to Dave. Now I'm not sure who to pose it to, maybe Randy. So we have committee members who have been village residents, who have extensive industry experience, 30, 40 years worth. They are, we have two that are going to be moving to Liberty Grove, but have industry expertise. Some of our other committees, we have members, we, or we've said, we would be encouraged to try to find people who have industry knowledge to serve on committees. The question is, can we have non-resident committee members that have specific industry knowledge on, for instance, the Marina Committee?
The answer to that question is that you can unless there's some specific ordinance to the contrary, you know. There often is. I don't know if there is or not in this case.
I think that's committee by committee because we talked about, I think we had explicitly changed that for plan commission years ago.
Yeah, I do recollect with plan in particular. We said if we could get a builder, a developer, an architect, anybody with industry experience, that would be a good thing. Let's do it. So.
Unless there's a law, Pat, I, I believe we would just change the village's bylaws pertaining to the Marina and it's how it's made up, how the committee's made up.
Right now we check the bylaws and they state citizens. They don't, it doesn't state village residents. So.
Be changed.
Well.
Well, citizens though implies citizens of the village of Sister Bay. So.
His nationality of citizenship is national. It's not a, nobody's ever been a citizen of the village.
If, is that something that the Marina Committee would like to have happen?
Yeah, yeah. We have Fuzzy and, and Dwight Anderson. They're both great. Both sold their properties. Both relocated Fuzzy across the street, Dwight up in Ellison Bay. You know, they're willing to still serve, which is great. They're, as Pat said, they're got a ton of knowledge and they're very helpful. They're lonely old men that have nothing else to do. I hope some of them are listening. So I think it would be beneficial to the Marina, which is beneficial to the village for us to keep those guys as long as they're willing to do it. And, you know, if we got more people within the village and residents with similar experience, but we all know how hard it is to fill these positions and, and, you know, it'd be great if we could keep them.
Okay. Well, then we'll do a rewrite of that makeup and present it at January's meeting for approval then.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, Pat.
You put that on your to-do list, Bo?
Yep.
I didn't see you write it.
Two seconds to change it from citizen to non-resident.
Okay, then we've got Marina Fest.
We met on October 22nd, basically a short meeting, reviewed financials, looked at the donations that we'd received, looked at the statistics of some of the donors. We will be making a villa payment to the village for the money we owe and spring meeting set in March, on March 18th of next year.
Okay, parks, properties and streets.
Hasn't met. But will be meeting.
Yeah, they will be meeting next Monday at 1 o'clock. Right?
Well, we have yet to determine that, but most likely.
Okay. Personnel. There's minutes in the packet.
Yep.
Okay, Plan Commission.
Plan Commission, minutes in the packet. And we have a meeting next Tuesday. I, you know, Chad, you talk about the two lonely old men who have nothing else to do. If other board members have nothing else to do next Tuesday, if you're able to chime in and listen to the Plan Commission, I would greatly appreciate it. We are having a presentation from Lance and Bridget Crane on a conditional use permit. We have not done one since the wedding barn. We probably should have removed all of that out of the zoning code, but we did not. So here we are, listening to a presentation and a conditional use, it becomes a higher bar to allow something that is not permitted, but you know, that will give a nod to it, but they have to do certain other things to appease the village, let's say. Some things that we would like to see done and I just think it would be helpful throughout, this is going to go on for probably three or four months to get to a finalization. And it would be helpful if other board members were aware of the presentation, different conversations that's had. There will also be a public hearing, most likely in January. So there are different things that the village may ask for. And I think it just would be helpful if, you know, any of you had any ideas as we move through this process, I guess.
It's a good idea. I appreciate that. Do you know, will we be videoing that meeting that if somebody were to miss it but wanted to view it, we could do so. It's like, okay, super.
Yeah, I can share recordings.
Yeah, can you, can you just email us the link through our village emails right away, just so we have it and we're ready to go?
It's the same one, but yes, I can do that.
Yeah. No, I mean the, to the actual meeting like you do in our packet.
When I set up the agendas, I can send them to you.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Okay, SBA. Those minutes are in the packets. Did you want to say anything, Vivian?
No. Any questions? A lot of stuff, obviously it was a rough year. A lot of stuff went virtual. A lot of stuff is still going to be virtual. The Short Film Fest is going to be virtual if anybody's interested.
I watch all my movies at home, so it's perfect.
You can actually join the Short Film Festival this year.
I want to be hip.
Marisms Zone Commission?
Has not met.
But there were minutes, my goodness.
Well, yeah, it's Executive Committee met.
Okay, Utilities?
We have not met other than the fact that we have hired a new lead operator.
Wow.
Who?
What is his name?
His name is Dan Klansky. He's coming from the county.
And what did he do with the county?
Um, can pull up his title. Essentially the same, he was an operator at the county. I have his, I can get his title.
I didn't know the county had a plant.
Let's see. Hold on, let me pull it up.
He was the facilities manager at the county and prior to that, he was a plant supervisor down in Greenville. And prior to that, he was an operator at Manitowoc, I want to say.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Tasha. And when does he start?
14th.
Of December?
Yep.
Speaking of utilities, are we going to have a meeting this month?
I, I really don't have anything for the agenda at this time. I haven't gotten an update from Liberty Grove.
Okay, that's fine. I was just curious. Okay.
I talked to, I talked to Bo today, Pat, and he.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay, Youth Center, that has not met. Ad hoc ice rink has not met, but I think they did do the painting on the rink, right, Bo?
Yes, painting on the rink is done. There's just a few other spots they didn't get to because of the weather.
And I know that they are working on getting sponsorships for board ads. Ad hoc emergency management has not met. TIF 1 and TIF 2 Joint Review Board has also not met. And then we, Denise, per the new rules, we'd need a motion to accept the reports.
Correct. Somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by, second by Nino. All those in favor respond with an eye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Okay, item number 10. Consider a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Stats 19.85 sub 1 sub E to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conduct other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And Wisconsin State Stats 19.85 sub 1 sub G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation and which it is or is likely to become involved. Motion by Berto?
Second.
Second by Nino. Row call?
Bell, yes.
Baker, yes.
Berto, yes.
Duffy, yes.
Granco, yes.
Eno, yes.
Yay.
Janelle, do you want to pause the recording?
You're recording.
Okay, it is 8:13 and I will make a motion to reconvene into open session. Motion by Berto.
Second.
Second by Baker. Row call?
Bell, yes.
Baker, yes.
Berto, yes.
Duffy, yes.
Granco, yes.
Eno, yes.
Okay. And Janelle, would you like to read the motion, please?
Sure.
That the village board approves the contract with the Action Appraisers and Consultants Incorporated for maintenance assessment services for the village of Sister Bay as presented.
Can we just notate how many year contract that is?
Sure. Um, let's see, four year. Is it one year?
No, no, I think it's four.
A four-year contract.
Four years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Motion by Baker, second by Granco. All those in favor respond with an eye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 13, discussion regarding matters to be placed on a future agenda or referred to a committee official or employee.
Well, what I show is.
Charter on spectrum in January.
Yep, discussion regarding potential amendments to the village's committee bylaws.
Yep.
Full session and then charter.
Okay.
And then Parks Committee. Oh, no way.
That, that was just.
Events. Yep, you're correct. Sorry about that.
So now do you want to talk about when you're going to schedule your next, if you're going to have a special board meeting, when you want to schedule it, as long as you're all here?
For right now, we can't do Tuesday, the 8th because of Plan Commission. Does Wednesday or Thursday, 9th or the 10th, is there any conflicts there if we have a meeting?
Works for me.
Good.
Either one of those.
Does 6:00 PM work?
Yes. But why could we not do it maybe on the 14th?
I mean, that's just pushing it closer to the two-week mark.
Okay.
It might depend on.
You know, Tasha's got to talk to people.
I think I can have responses by the end of this week, actually.
And why couldn't you would then, okay. I'm just not good on Wednesday and Thursday.
We could get you at like 9 o'clock at night on the 8th after your planning.
We might not be done at 9 o'clock.
9 is a bold statement.
This should be.
Watch it.
Should be a real quick meeting, shouldn't it? 5 o'clock right before the plan? I mean, it's going to be, here's what we said we wanted to do. Here's what we.
You could do it before. If, yeah.
Let's do it before.
Perfect. Good idea.
Oh, but, but Nate can't, Nate can't be there before 5:30.
Well, can you make Plan 6 and make this 5:30? If, that would work for Nate?
Which they were looking at Wednesday, Wednesday for this?
No, the 8th. No, Plan Commission Agenda, did that go out yet?
It did not. We could actually change it. I'll just have to reach out to everyone and let them know that it's 6 instead of 5:30.
Yes.
Yeah.
5:30.
5:30 Special Board, 6 o'clock plan.
Yep. Excellent.
Sweet.
Good idea, Scott.
Yeah, we want everybody there for this in case something.
Okay, with no other business to be conducted, we'll entertain a motion at 8:18. Okay, with no other business to be conducted, we'll entertain a motion at 8:18. Motion by Nino, second by Duffy. All those in favor respond with an eye? Opposed? Carried? If every, as soon, I'd like to say something to everybody as soon as Janelle hits the recording.